Board of Commissioners, would you record and indicate all three Commissioners are present. First item in the business is our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve our executive session memorandum of March 10th.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am most curious. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes, February 24th meeting.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am most curious. Next item is highway business. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We have a couple items for you today, and I think Brad might have another. The first item calls on your traffic study correspondence. We have three letters, we'd be happy to talk to you, and they're kind of all semi-related.
Yeah, could you run through what we're doing and the requests?
Sure. The first request is regarding 346 Campus Parkway and Maryland Road. Basically, our reply is, we recently have received some funding as we applied for, to do some intersections, some signal modifications at that intersection that would allow some additional turning movements. Basically, we have stated in our letter that at this time, we're not going to do any improvements, however, we received funding and that the project will be forthcoming to make those changes at that intersection.
And that's addressing the left turns?
Permissive left turns, yes.
That's fine, that's the one I was more concerned about.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the course.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am most curious. Well, the other item I have is seasonal, summer seasonal, look, our exception, for part-time. You had that one?
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Well, the request is...
Request to allow part-time seasonal employees to exceed the 20 act right now.
For the record, thank you, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am most curious, thank you.
Thank you.
Brad?
Yeah, I just have one item, and it's not on the agenda. I came in right at the last minute. This is just submitted for the record, really. This is our recent community crossings award and the agreement associated with that. There's nothing new for you to sign. I signed these via DocuSign. I'm just really submitting it for the record and for your concurrence that I proceed on and sign that via DocuSign, which I've been authorized.
I received that and I'd sent it to you, so.
Just to confirm with the execution.
It's a million and a half, so it's a massive award, which is a good deal.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am most curious.
Thank you.
Thank you. From the East Public Library, Melissa.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me time to present. Every year, we gather data for the annual report for the Indiana State Library. So I'm Melissa Loesel, and I'm the Director at the Hamilton East Public Library. Last year, when we presented, I was here as one of two interim directors, and I'm happy to report that the board voted to make me the permanent director last spring. And we do have our two board members who are appointed by the Commissioners here today, and I'm just Craig Seavey and Susan Grandal. Our library is comprised of the four townships that make up Noblesville and Fishers, including Noblesville, Wayne, Delaware, and Fall Creek Townships. The most recent census population for our library service territory was 187, 180,617 people. So we currently have 87,410 registered cardholders. As a measure of total population served, we are the largest library system in Hamilton County and the fourth-largest library system in the state. We did report a slight dip in library traffic. However, when we were pulling library, or pulling numbers for the state, we saw that there was an error with one of our sensors in one of the doors, and we were reporting about a third more people leaving the building than ever entering. So, so we had to do some estimating. We've got the company that does this under, has fixed it, so. But we wanted to be cautious in our estimates, so we're anticipating our numbers will be back up next year. Then we have a breakdown of our expenditures for the operating budget. Like most organizations, our salaries and benefits are our largest expenditures. That includes our salaries, health insurance, and pension payments. We spent 21% of the budget on our services and charges, and that includes a lot of things like our cleaning information technology, utilities, repairs, and maintenance. But it also includes things like our eBooks and databases that we pay for. The majority of our capital outlays category is spent on library materials, and that includes our books, DVDs, and audiobooks. And we actually increased this expenditure quite a bit in 2024, but we added more on spending on library materials. We also upgraded our computers and replaced some 20-year-old furniture. And Mike Reuter is our, has been our longtime financial advisor. And we also have Kim Lefler, who is our CFO, and we're always happy to meet with anyone to answer more detailed questions about our budgets. For library programs, I'm pleased to announce that our numbers are up from 2023 in every age category. We offered more programs than we have, and then we had better attendance. And then when we looked at the data more granularly, we found that the average attendance per program was up. We eliminated some programs that just had habitually low attendance numbers and challenged our staff to find things that maybe would be more popular with people. So that's paid off. People always vote for programs with their feet. And we're still, you know, we still want to see these numbers go up, so we're hoping that when we come back next year, these will be up even more. And Hipple on the move, that's our outreach. We have an outreach team, and they do a really great job representing the library at a wide variety of events. And they now have a new van, and it's custom-designed for our outreach team. And it has a custom wrap designed by the Wilkinson Brothers, and they've done a number of murals around the area. Our outreach team reached over 25,000 people at over 100 events last year, which is a 20% increase over 2024. And when I saw the numbers for 2024, I was shocked at how high they were. So I was just completely blown away when I saw these numbers. We go to a large community events like the Peony Festival, Spark Fishers, Boobash, but we also go to things like the soup kitchens, literacy nights at the local elementary schools, farmers' markets, senior citizen centers, and a laundry list of other places. Looking at our circulation, we circulated 2,294,067 items. Roughly a third of all circulation are electronic materials, although the vast majority of it is, of our circulation is still from, you know, things you can touch like a book, a CD, or a movie. We'll continue to evaluate the best way to allocate funds in this category if we see more people switching over to digital, since a digital book costs about three to four times more than a print book. We do have the top five most popular items on this slide. Three of those top five are children's materials, and that's not surprising to us. Children and families continue to prioritize books in print over digital, and they're some of our most dedicated users. And then our patron experience survey. It's a survey that we do every year. This is our sixth year offering this survey. Most of our ratings remain steadily, steady with slight drops in library materials and technology. We did make some changes to one of our digital collections, and we had to reduce the number of items that people were allowed to check out at one time and put some caps on the amount that we were spending every month on that. We were, we were on a runaway train to running out of the budget money before the end of the year. So it was, it was, it was a, it was not a fun experience having to pull that back from people, but we've got a good number that we're at right now, where we're able to balance the needs of the patrons and keep the budget in check. We, we anticipate that this number will go up next year since we've made these changes. And then most of the issues with our technology, we know comes from our, we have been having some issues with printing, the public. When the public comes in to print items, there have been some issues with that, and we're working with a new vendor on making sure that that gets improved. As we reflect back on 2024 and look forward in 2025, we're committed to being community-focused in our planning and our operations. We want to be sure that we offer programs that appeal to our community members of all ages and that the materials we purchase meet the demands of our community. We're almost finished with overhauling our security system so that our space is the safest it possibly can be for the community. We're completing a feasibility study for a potential third branch that would serve the rapidly growing portions of Wayne and Fall Creek. And we launched a new website and app to help improve user experience. And we started a new library foundation so that we can continue to provide amazing experiences that enhance the quality of life in Hamilton County. I can just say, it's, it's the honor of a lifetime to lead this library system, which happens to be my local library. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you still have the create area underneath the library?
Oh, yes, at Fishers. It's the Ignite Studio, and we're actually looking at creating a, it'll be a smaller space, but bringing some, some similar things to the Noblesville library as well.
That's really a nice concept, and I personally used it a lot with my granddaughter.
Good, well, I'm glad to hear that.
How, I noticed that you have 18% of the capital on capital outlays. Where are you at on the construction part of your building? And what specifically is that? Is that for renovations? Is it for to finish up? What, you've already started, or?
Well, a large, a large part of it for, for 2024 was, and we did increase our spending on the materials, but then also the security upgrade was quite costly. I mean, we added all-new cameras and access, door access as well, so that was another thing. And then upgrading computers, and we had some furniture that was original to the building. And so, so that was, that's where that bulk of that material went. The, the construction is by and large all complete. We have a few punchless items at Noblesville that we're working on. We are doing a couple of things, we are going to do some small projects in 2025 to address some issues that didn't get corrected during the construction projects, because they ran up, the money ran out and time ran out. And so where, there's just some things we want to see enhanced to make sure that we have beautiful facilities that are functional for the public.
And then my last question, it's really not a question, it's really a compliment. First, congratulations on your promotion. And I also wanted to compliment you on the communication that you have with us. It's been great. I think that we're getting more communication than we ever have. Are you doing the same with the council as well?
Yes, so the monthly reports I send out to the Commissioners, the Council, both school systems, and both cities, and the mayors for both cities.
That's great, you're doing a great job, thank you.
I want to say to Mr. Seavey and Mr. Grandal and you, that last year, I think it was at this time, things were pretty uncomfortable for us. In fact, in my 40 years in government, the library probably created as much concern for me as I've had the last couple of years, and things have seemingly, at least from my perspective, settled down immensely. Is that correct on your part as well?
Yes, I, I mean, I would say.
No emails and calls and all that anymore, so I'm assuming, we, we assume when, when we don't hear anything, things are going well.
Right, no news is good news, and stay out of the news.
Well, congratulations, I think you've all done a very nice job of settling that down. We really appreciate it. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Hamilton County Planning Commission, C.J. Taylor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
At the last regular Plan Commission meeting, the Plan Commission voted in favor to send these two contracts to you guys for final approval and signature. One is for the contract inspector, and the other is for the attorney for the Planning Commission. And I have those here for your signatures if you'd like those.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am most curious. Human Resources, Sheena Randall.
Good afternoon. Katie Stowers and I are here for approval of the ratification for the 2025 Anthem renewal. And I'll let Katie go into more detail. Yeah, so we, I believe, already presented to the Commissioners in the fall that we were going to increase the annual maximum on dental bills at $2,000. That was done, and I think with very good reception from members who now have an enriched benefit. We didn't make any changes to the two plans that we offer under Anthem. We did get a new pharmacy contract that significantly is creating rebate revenue, savings for the county, about $800,000 of savings just from improved pricing. So it was, it was a very successful negotiation. And then we renewed our stop loss with excess reinsurance. We, we were waiting for Anthem to give us their final signature on the documents before we brought them back, and we were just able to retrieve those.
So you need ratification, my signature, right?
Yes, please.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am most curious.
Thanks.
By the way, congratulations, I think you all do a very fantastic job. And I told you this in our, in our insurance committee meetings, but Katie, your organization and, and our, our group just do an unbelievable job. We get compliments from our employees constantly, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. I really love working with you.
By the way, you were appointed as part of the insurance- By the way, you were appointed as part of the insurance committee.
I signed the official paperwork.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Murgens.
Good afternoon. I've got three items on the agenda. The first two are both from Esri. The first one is just a capacity increase for our servers that allows us to use four cores process of the processors. The other one is a maintenance renewal for the existing products that we use around the county.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The third item is a Comcast sales order form, and that is for the prosecutor's office location at the Blue Sky Building over there. So that will be, I think, a three-year agreement. I have to double check that, but we've got that set up and ready for installation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next on the agenda is Jill Ackton.
Good afternoon.
Administrator.
We have three contracts today. All of them are for attorneys who speak English and Spanish to represent defendants in Court Four, Six, and Seven who speak Spanish. For Court Four, we have Victor Gevert. Court Six, we have Thomas Martin. And Court Seven, we have Carlos Lamb.
I think a motion to approve the requested pauper contracts.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Buildings grounds, the Honorable Stephen Wood.
That's the first.
I know. Probably the last two, Steve, but enjoy it.
I have a friendly, I have three contracts and one request. First one being the deal you guys approved at the last meeting. This is the actual contract. The deal was awarded, will be awarded if you sign the contract. And this is part of an HPA C project that's funded through my current budget as approved by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The second, second one is a request for the county attorney to finish working on the utility district's station, lift station number six. We have the funding for it. He does have the information. I'm just letting you know that we're requesting that he finishes up. We do have the funding on it.
It just, I'd say it's a notice proceed, commissioners. We will amend the, the pre, the original BOT agreement with it, just a scope amendment. And just so that Steve and his team can keep moving forward, just wanted to get that together, then we'll have it in writing at your next meeting on the 24th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next one's a contract for lawn care, landscaping for everything downtown. This will include the parking garage, the lot we acquired toward the building down across the street, the Judicial Center and the old courthouse. That would be GKM. And also, we are going to ask them to give us a price to do the front of the Judicial Building this year as well, to get that cleaned up as we did the old courthouse last year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The last contract is JSD. That will be all the outlaw buildings. That includes the solar field, the health department. That includes mulching, spraying, lawn care as well.
So moved.
Second, I guess I can't take my goats now.
You can if you like.
Not after you spray.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you tired already?
You're wearing me down. Next item on the agenda, grant administration, all in power.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Today I'm requesting approval for the calendar year 2025 grant agreement with the Indianapolis Transportation Corporation for financial assistance for projects under the Federal Transit Administration, Section 5307, Urbanized Area Formula Grants Program for the Hamilton County Express Transportation Program. And I did send the contract over to the legal department, and they reviewed it and it looked good to them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a second, let me catch up here. Next item on the agenda is Emergency Management Agency, Ryan Tennessee.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Here today to seek approval and signature on the federal fiscal year 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grants, which provides reimbursement to Hamilton County for a portion of the salaries of the executive director, deputy director, and finance and admin section chief. Under this year's grant agreement, we are being reimbursed $89,827.62 by the Indiana Department of Homeland Security.
How's this compared to prior years?
This aligns with pretty much the last two years. We really took a significant decline in what they were reimbursing us for. But that was across the board statewide to try to accommodate having an emergency manager in every single county. So really, it was the state's reorganization of the funding that impacted what we got in the end.
Okay, that's what it looked like to me.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Pretrial Services, CJ Miller.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Pretrial Services is requesting signature and approval for a supplemental public defender contract. One of our current public defenders has to resign as of end of March. Just due to some, his practices picking up basically. And one of our current, Christopher Phillips, one of our current attorneys, has agreed to take on and add to his contract one additional day per week beginning the 1st of April.
Motion to approve.
Second, this is a substitution, not a new contract.
Yes, correct.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Missionary Committee report.
The only thing that I have is I've been spending a lot of time down at the State House on legislative issues. So, pretty cumbersome.
We had the 911 Executive Board meeting today, trying to hone in for budgeting purposes, what the desires and needs of our partners will be for new officers, et cetera. And still trying to bring in administrative issues with respect to reimbursements or more or less for DM4 officer. Telecommunication or the dispatcher week will be, I believe, April 13. So if you have time, feel free to stop by Dispatch. They'd like to see your phones.
Anything else? County attorney.
Yes, thank you. I have a few items. The, the first is, I think it was either your previous meeting or a meeting before, you approved a utility relocation agreement with Hy-Vee for a roundabout that will take place on 134th and O'Leo. We are part of this, we have an amended contract today. We're working on an amended contract right now that changes some of the language. It's not a reimbursement by the county. It's something where our, our financial contribution is capped at half a million dollars per the original agreement between you and, and the city of Fishers and Hy-Vee. I've worked with Brad and Joel. We have our comments in place. We are sending that to Hy-Vee to have them sign prior to bringing it back to you. But the updated one will rescind the previous one, which was never executed by Hy-Vee. We did not provide it to them. And so the, the main gist is that, like I said, is that they will be, the county will not be in a place where we have to pay for any of the utility relocation if there is any expenses that would ever occur. And that Hy-Vee would have to pay us prior to that. So today I ask for your approval to, and I, I think timing is of the essence because Duke Energy has apparently said that they need 374 days to get a poll.
Just for poll.
And so with the, I'm asking for your motion to approve the updated Hy-Vee agreement subject to legal review, giving the president the authority to sign if it's in between now and your next meeting so that we can hopefully get that notice to Duke sooner rather than later.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The, the next item I have is the, is an amendment to the scoping agreement for the Hamilton County Judicial Center. This is with Envoy. I know that they have just recently presented to you where they are up to this point. This is needed to keep moving forward to get to that guarantee max price. Steve Wood has reviewed it and approves of this as well. And I know that you are going to be meeting with them here in the near future to talk about that. But this scoping amendment is needed to get us closer to that guarantee max price. So I have that for your approval today as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The last item I have is Resolution Number 03-10-25-1. This is a resolution that approves, approves the interlocal agreement between Hamilton County and the Hamilton County Regional Utility District. The Hamilton County Regional Utility District Board of Trustees approved a substantially similar resolution and interlocal at their meeting this morning. So I'm requesting that you approve this today, and then it'll be sent to, a, a resolution will be sent to the county council ratifying this. But it is for the $2.1 million that will be used as the utility district's operational budget for 2025. That money has been appropriated by the county council at their meeting just last week. And this will allow the utility district general manager, CJ Taylor, to start the operational process, which is great timing. He says that will be providing services for testing purposes, I believe, to the armory next month sometime. So I have that for your approval today as well.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Administration.
Thank you. We have a forty to seven minute first off presenting for your review, approval, and signature permission to air brand. I have SRF disbursement form related to the February 12, 2025 invoice from Wesler Engineering. That's invoice number 46290B of the amount of $138,747.70 for design, land acquisition, construction, administration, and construction management services related to Phase 2A and 2B of the US 31 Baker's Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District project.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item number, thank you. Item two, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval. I have a request from Ryan Shelton, partnership and projects manager for Noblesville Creates. He's seeking permission to utilize the historic courthouse square, portions of the River Walk and/or historic courtroom for four events pursuant to the event applications that they have submitted and subject to their providing the required certificate of insurance prior to the events. The events are April, the Noblesville Creates Ferry Bill,
Oh, your favorite.
Which is April 25th and 26th of 2025. They'd be using portions of the courthouse square and also portions of the River Walk for that. May 10th would be our fair on the square. June 14th would be their Hatch Fest, which is done in conjunction with the Saint Michael's Strawberry Festival. And then in November, you've already, I believe, in essence, given them approval for use of the historic courtroom for a performance related to the DC Stevenson criminal trial. They're now asking for, in addition to those three dates, the 14th, 15th, and 16th, they're asking for November 12th and 13th for rehearsals for that play that will address the significant DC Stevenson criminal trial that took place in the historic county courtroom back in, back in 1925, 100 years ago.
You two have your very uniforms ready?
I'm working on yours for you.
Thank you. You've got yours on that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Item three, I've just presented for your information. We've recently received work of State Road 37 Improvements Project, which will be addressing improvements on State Road 37 from the area just south of Greenfield Avenue. The area north of State Road 32, 38 has been recently kicked off. The in dot Noblesville project team is willing to meet with interested parties, and this can be requested via the project website, which can be found at www.sr37improvements.com. So it looks like that's going to be moving forward here.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Chair.
Nothing at this time.
If we had a question for him.
Oh, 100 maybe around 146th Street.
We've had reports of accidents and things created because of speeding on 146th Street. Do we patrol that or do we rely on the municipalities to patrol?
No, we do patrol that. And we've had some enforce, increased enforcement efforts, especially out west where some of the areas are kind of wide open. So we've increased some enforcement out there. I'm not sure specifically where, where you're speaking of, but we were getting.
Hazeldale was one of them.
Okay. We do, we do patrol the area.
What about fresh dev and that kind of stuff?
Yeah. There were some reports on social media.
Yeah.
And it said it came from the sheriff's office.
Yeah, so our year-end report was sent out and our top five crash locations, which this is just for county areas, not for the whole county, just where we patrol, the top five locations are on 146. And so I believe Fox 59 reached out to the highway department and talked to them about that. And so there was like a story on that. But it's, it's really kind of, the crash numbers are really kind of in line where they have been over the last several years. We have had some increase with, with some of the construction. We had some, you know, construction zone crashes and things like that that have happened. Or people turning, like on Allisonville, when they're not supposed to be turning. And we've, we've enforced some of those, but, you know, we're not there all the time. So we have had those crashes and we responded to those. But it's not like a huge uptick or something like that. It's just those areas. And I think what we're going to see when Allisonville's done and then when Hazeldale's done, I think we're going to see these numbers greatly reduced. Just kind of like what happened on 31. There used to be a lot of crashes.
Oleo, 116th Street, right around in there. Do you patrol that area? Because I know we've got some federal aid projects that we're getting ready, that we're going to be doing. And I know that's a high accident area over there. Not necessarily because of the road, but mostly because people, whether it's texting, running the lights, you name it.
Sure, like we are in different areas, but if it's in the municipality, then they patrol it, you know, more regularly than, than we do, so.
Well, John, with, with 146th Street, since it's under contract under county, county jurisdiction.
Sure.
Do we get help from the municipalities on patrolling that or do we patrol it all our own?
I mean, we patrol it, but yeah, they're there all the time. Like I see, you know, Carmel and Westfield making traffic stops on 146 all the time, Noblesville. And it's just typically, we're the ones that respond for crashes. So the city police may show up, but they're going to call for us to respond and take the crash report since it's on us. But yeah, they do respond. They, they do make traffic stops on 146 all the time.
But is it, is predominantly our responsibility, right?
It is our responsibility, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But they requested jurisdiction to write tickets probably about 10 years ago when Sheriff Carter was in office, the jurisdiction.
Okay. Anything else, Sheriff? Auditor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's not on the agenda, but we always look for a photo for the part of our annual report. And if you're going to be the grand marshal of the parade, I would love to put that on next year's annual report.
You know, I really like you.
Did you wait till I?
I really like you.
You know.
You're a really good auditor.
Since you become auditor, we'll talk about it later.
So I have for the, for your approval, requesting approval for liability trust account transfer authorization. So what this does is add Staley Dunn in our office as a backup for Jenny. So what this does is just add Staley Dunn in our office as a backup for Jenny, just as the president's signature.
So moved.
I'll second, but what internal control do they have coming on from you before these are made, or do we have some internal control on?
To which, when they sign the liability trust-
To make the actual transfers?
Yes.
It's a two-signature process?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
You going to call?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The request to freeze the accrued PTO and sick time hours for both the newly elected surveyor and your outstanding auditor.
You mean the one that was talking about like Ferry Bill?
You didn't hear about the sudden change of policy?
Well, you know, I think we probably could have approved this one if they-
It was a break in time.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have for your approval the clerk's monthly report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Liability trust monthly expenditure report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aerial claims.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And venue claims.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order before we go into our work session in the back? We will be having a work session with Mike Trivedore on the vast Hamilton County projects updates.
I think we-
No, we're putting back on. He said it'd only take five minutes.
Yeah.
And he's here.
Yeah, he's here already.
And we will also be going over the new building-
Expansion.
... expansion details. So with that, there are motion to temporary adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in motion carries.